We call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. Uh, Dr. Meeks, who else?
Yes, sir. Greg Davis. Berna Payne. Sarah Ellis.
I am here, but I just want to make an announcement that I have to leave at 7:15 due to a prior engagement, so regardless of the discussion, I'm not walking out for any reason other than this is a call meeting not already on my calendar before something else, and so I will be leaving at 7:15, and I just don't want anybody to misinterpret the reason why, so thank you.
Thank you. Charles Worthy.
Here.
Linda Davis.
Here.
Jared Byden.
Here.
Carol Williams. Dr. John Knox.
Here.
Ovita Thornton.
Thank you. We will, uh, move on to a stand for silent meditation and then pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in relation to God, universal, of liberty, justice, and all. Thank you all for joining us for that, and thank you very much for being here. We have, uh, we're excited to see, uh, the interest and, and the attention to, to our matters, so please so much for being here tonight. Our, uh, first item is to amend or, uh, adopt the agenda.
Uh, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move the discussion of West Broad from executive session into, um, actually with the whole business.
And to remove the executive session?
Yes, and remove the executive session.
Okay, so there's a motion from Dr. Knox to remove the executive session and to, um, place West Broad, uh, as a discussion item?
Um, officially, since it was discussed on May 17th and we, we said we would continue discussing it, that's actually old business.
And so you'd like to add old business to the, to the, um, right?
I, I, I think that's probably the most appropriate place. I'm not trying to play any games with it, just should be on the agenda somewhere, and that seems like the appropriate place.
So it would be to add, uh, old business, um, West Broad discussion. And that's second by...
And remove executive session.
And remove executive session, and that's second by, uh, this really interesting negotiation. Would you like to make an amendment?
I'd like to make an amendment, I'd add a little bit of the agenda, I have a discussion of West Broad, and I'd like to leave the executive session on the purpose of this position.
Right, so why?
To discuss property in this position. The second is down. So sorry.
So.
Could that be repeated? Sure. The, yeah, um, the proposed amendment to the motion, uh, is that we leave executive session, uh, on the agenda.
Yes.
This is specified for what purpose?
For private discussion.
It says it's read, for the prop- some, some property.
Yes.
So those are separate, so.
Mr. Byden just, uh, kind of held the order, because there, there's a motion, the second on the floor, I think the first order is to take action.
I think we need to, uh, simply have a second on the amendment and, and then vote on that.
So there's an amendment to Dr. Knox's original motion.
That's right.
Okay.
Is there a second to, uh, the motion made by, uh, Ms. Davis?
I second that motion.
Thank you for that. Any more discussion around the amendment? Talking now about the amendment to, uh, this motion.
Which would be to?
To include leaving executive session as part of the agenda.
So to have a line, a line item number four of West Broad?
Right.
Discussion.
The amendment specifically, what we're voting on is specifically whether we leave executive session as part of, right, and we'll vote on whether to do that, and then up the other motion.
So vote it separately now.
That's right, we're voting first on the amendment. Do I have that right?
Sure.
First on the amendment.
No, I think it's inclusive. I, I'll, I'll stay in, I'll be, I'll be glad to be wrong on that, but I believe that we have amended motion and we vote on that, but it doesn't, the first motion that was made and seconded is gone, is now gone, is now amended.
Okay, all right. No, that's not how it works. So, so we, I think we're voting on now is whether to accept the amendment to Dr. Knox's motion.
Right.
But what Ms. Sanders said, if you're going to score, it can be inclusive now, but, uh, I'm not going to vote for it being inclusive, but, uh, maybe we need to have attorney to rule on this. Ms. Bray.
Well, if Dr. Knox's motion was seconded, then somebody moved to his motion, so you've got to vote in that second, right, like I had, uh?
Yes.
So you've got to vote on whether to amend Dr. Knox's motion first.
That's right.
Then you'll vote on Dr. Knox's motion, either as an end of that passes or as a reasonable statement that doesn't happen.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there any discussion around the amendment? All in favor of, uh, the, um, the motion to amend Dr. Knox's motion as made by, uh, Ms. Davis and seconded by Mr. Worthy? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, that motion fails. Uh, next we have an opportunity to discuss the motion made by Dr. Knox, which was to add an agenda item of old business, which is a discussion of West Broad, and to take executive session off of the agenda. Any questions about that? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. No motion carries. So the agenda will be amended to, to add old business, uh, when we discuss, um, West Broad property, and we will add that after the discussion of reservations.
Our first action, I, so, Mr. Byden just wanted to double check with the council, if it's old business, then that should be the first order of business.
That's right.
So that should be the first thing that you discuss.
Okay, that will be fine. And, and, um, so that, uh, so we deal with that now?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Um, I might add, and this has been, uh, part of our discussion, uh, by email. I'm not going to enforce this, but my recommendation is that our discussion of this, um, each board member has time to, to, um, to assess where their head is at on, on the proposals that are in front of us, and the process they'd like to see going forward. Um, as, as, uh, has been clear from previous meetings, we struggle sometimes to, to have a difficult conversation. We're very different people. All of us are, are, are dedicated to, uh, the work that we're doing, dedicated to children, dedicated to making a good educational system for, uh, here in Farm County, and I want to get on to that work, which is, uh, we need to improve West Broad and wanted to be able to do that. But it's worth, uh, hearing from each board member about, um, about their thoughts, and so each board member would like to take a few minutes and, and do that, that makes a lot of sense. Ms. Ellis, would you like to start?
So, uh, somebody recently said at the meeting that, um, parties who all want the same thing, kind of, at some level, come together and, and come to consensus. And I think that the one thing that everybody has in common in this room, and especially at this table, is, um, that we all want within the best interests of our kids. And so I feel very strongly that there is a way, a compromise, a solution that, um, can be had on this discussion of this topic, because it will all be centered around children in our community. So my head, my thoughts are that, um, I, I haven't really differed from where I was last week, so, or two weeks ago, whenever it was, we had a lot of discussion, but, um, the, um, I believe that we have heard an outcry from our community, we have heard a tremendous amount of support, um, there absolutely cannot be more, and we would be failing our role as, um, leaders in our community if we did not listen and, and, and to the support centered around the Land Trust's proposal. I believe that the school district, we have a responsibility, it is our ability, and we have a responsibility to the kids in our community for that building. And I would like to see that our superintendent and his staff, as does he needs, um, work on a proposal with our community, interested community members who submitted, um, proposals, and come up with a plan that is incorporate, that incorporates and is, um, I think everybody's going to have to give a little, and everybody's going to feel like they won a little, and everybody's going to feel like they lost a little, but that pulls together, um, a plan that both is in line with our strategic plan for our students and our district, and also incorporates the community needs. Um, I believe that that, that working collaboratively, the, the district and the community, um, organizations should come up with a plan to then bring back to the Board of Education for a final approval, um, and far even keeping in mind that we have heard a ton of community support for some specific, um, uses for that property, and, um, so if the district were to come back to, to us with something that did not, um, include the conversations of the community, I think that we would be, uh, failing as our role that, um, at, at, um, uh, being facilitators. So, um, that's where my head is, and I hope that together, the district can work in conjunction with some of our community partners, and that the board should step away from this and let, uh, the district do its job.
Thank you. Mr. Worthy?
Absolutely, thank you very much. You expressed that, uh, let me, let me say this, I think that some people misunderstood, uh, me last week when I was, uh, making some comments about this whole situation here, that I was not supporting, uh, Superintendent Dr. Means. That was not the case, I was just making some points about what happened in a meeting on March 27th, which I would not go back and repeat that, uh, this evening. Uh, Dr. Means put together a proposal, I have it with you this evening, I've read it several times, I don't have any problem with that, I don't have any problem with that at all. And one of the things I would say right up front, and then I'll leave here, that when you look at it realistically, uh, as a board, you know, it's our charge to follow our role. The recommendation that the superintendent would make on this, you vote it up or you vote it down. If Dr. Means is going to make this recommendation, my hand would go up, I would stand up and raise my hand. Thank you very much, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Ms. Davis, would you like to add some comments?
So, my position is that I think that we are a lot aligned in terms of where we want to go with the building. What I do know is that this is very different, uh, a different experience than we've ever had. We have never been, in the five years that I've been here, met and approached by a community group or city commissioners to say, this is how we want to use your building. That's different, feels awkward. And so in other situations, we've had, um, sit downs with everybody at the table, and we actually share what we're talking about. We have proposals on the table where board members are participating in these proposals, that concerns me. There's a level of transparency required here, but we've not had the level of integrity required as well, and so my concern is that I don't want to open us up to a situation where if we get a lot of people together, that we can push a decision, whether it's the right decision or not, and so I would hopefully not have to be asking the proposal, because we have a lot of people here, because there are a lot of people not here as well. I think strongly that, uh, the role of the superintendent is to assess the needs of the district, I have not seen an assessment yet, or I see them talk about, both our plan and what we're going to do with that building, it seems very, very important to me. In addition, I think it's very, I think that the work of the district is to determine the best use of those facilities and to make sure that the needs of our K through 12 students are met with the resources that we have, to get them to be, uh, counterproductive and almost manage them on our part to do whatever. That said, I've not seen a single initiative out of this district in the whole five years I've been on the board, six, that didn't involve community input. And so to make this seem like it's a brand new thing or something that is beyond the realm of normal is troubling to me. And so with that said, I also go back to our protocol, we have a protocol that says we can and should discuss sensitive issues in executive session. And again, that keeps us within the confines of our work at hand and not make us so susceptible to the pressures of the community, because this is truly a living example of where we have bowed to community pressure to have this discussion publicly, and it is true that it is a little handled more discreetly than in executive session. And all of the information that we have, we could have, there is on the table, just on the website, everybody has access to, but if someone wants to know what individual board members think, I think that's a great opportunity to engage that board member, to get their position on things.
Thank you. I have a few thoughts I want to touch on, and, second, what Linda said about executive session, we also talked about lots of, of important details, including, uh, property in, in executive session, uh, the conversation today, uh, was it, was it involved in landscape, and we decided to, to do it here, uh, we just all went on that. Uh, it's not to say that, that, uh, this won't be a conversation that is had in executive sessions on future point. Um, and I think in, we have, we have a lot going for us here, we've got some incredibly engaged, public, some passionate people who are committed to not only building community in ways like, uh, are reflected in the proposals, but also in educating our children. Uh, this week, uh, we had another meeting, a training session around equity, uh, and discussion about how we can do better in our schools, about, um, how we can build on the fantastic job that, that's been done to reach even more students and to, um, satisfy the educational obligation that we have for more kids, and that's the work that I am interested in, that's the reason that I got on the floor, uh, and I know it's the same with my colleagues, I know that if we all put our, a pin on a map of where we're going to be five years from now, I think we'd be very, very similar across, across the board. Um, we have some wonderful input, uh, fantastic proposals, um, I would, I, I'm not going to vote on, I am going to continue voting for, for any, um, of the, of the proposals. Uh, going forward, um, my involvement and my, my, my support of the Land Trust has been, you know, an open, uh, part of, part of my participation in the community, the good part about having a small community is that you have folks on board engaged in lots of different directions. I don't feel this is because of a, I have a legal conflict of interest, this is because I want to, um, make sure that it is, everything is absolutely above the board and there is no, um, uh, suspicion of motives, uh, because when I sit in this seat, my interest, my 100% interest is in the best interest of our, of our kids. Um, I think our superintendent is in the absolute best position to, to take what is proposed, to take the great suggestions and input and the work, and to, uh, and to synthesize that. Uh, we, uh, we can't do that as a group, uh, that's just not, that's just not how groups work. He's in the best position to be able to do that, and just as, as, uh, Mr. Ridley talked about, um, come back to the board and the board gets the vote up for him on, on what he proposes. Uh, he's a, he is, uh, a man that is dedicated to, to our kids, dedicated to our community, and, uh, he hears loud and clear what, what, uh, we care about, and I want to put it directly in his hands, uh, to, uh, to work out, um, how all these, how this is a non-zero sum issue, how this is not, how we choose one to do exclusion of others, but, uh, how do you build something that is historic, that is beautiful, that is, uh, significant for our community, uh, going forward?
And I would, um, bring up the point that as I was looking at these proposals, and there are really some committed and awesome things that could happen in that facility, but I had not yet, and I don't think that I, I think the board has not yet received any information on what it would take to bring those, bring that facility up to par, that it could be occupied. And I am also concerned about the sustainability and effort and someone, if we do share those facilities to promote programs, but we first of all got to see a timeframe for getting that building, um, up to the standard that it could even get a C to accommodate any programs, and we're going to challenge the district to work on that and see what that looks like and the timeframe involved in doing that work.
Thank you.
Well, I came prepared to discuss the proposals themselves, and, and we haven't really talked about that much. Um, so I come at this from the point of view of a scientist who is regularly reviewing proposals, uh, regularly reviewing manuscripts, is an editor of a journal, and so I'm, I'm very used to this position, even if the way we got here was a little unusual, uh, with the superintendent being asked to step back and then to submit a proposal. So just taking the proposals as is, I've made some notes about them, uh, and I think that this is a great place to talk about them. I, I believe in sunshine, and I don't believe in the overuse of executive sessions, they can be permitted but not necessarily used. I, in fact, the national trend is away from using executive sessions, you can talk to people in other states, uh, or go through training, you'll find out that, um, executive session is supposed to be used sparingly. So anyway, um, proceeding to the actual proposals, um, the Athens Land Trust proposal, uh, was 70 pages long, 13,000 words, uh, culmination of five years of work, uh, has a rather extensive funding plan, including, uh, a commitment from the Gresky Foundation from Michigan, um, that foundation has a $3.26 billion endowment, and they annually pay out about 125 million, so the Gresky Foundation will be in a position to really help out, that's the foundation that comes from the founder of K. So, so when I was looking at the funding mechanisms, um, I thought that was very impressive. It's a grassroots effort with a lot of community input going back to, uh, five years ago. Probably the thing that stood out from the proposal the most was the commercial kitchen. Um, we, we tend to talk about it as, quote, "the garden," but this proposal is much, much deeper than that, um, and the commercial kitchen with a, a business plan and risk analysis, the level of detail there for a proposal, I thought was unusually good and addresses some issues regarding food desert. Um, so a lot of community support in terms of letters, letters of intent using the space. Uh, I think Carol just mentioned some questions that there would be about the use of the space and some of the building issues, um, and I think we've also heard some discussion about, um, how, how this integrates between the community and the school district, but this school district may still have some needs, uh, but I thought that this proposal had a level of detail that was commensurate with the seriousness of this issue, this has been a long-term issue. Uh, the Northeast torch of Business Alliance proposal, um, has five pages of text, it's a little over a thousand words, um, and it is in conjunction alone to the Athens High Industrial School and Burning Harasheim, and it discusses making an enhanced community space, um, whereas the Land Trust focused on a cultural heritage site with our information market, classrooms, and so forth, but there is some overlap, so there seems to be some ability to, um, to kind of synergize between the two. There was quite a laundry list of things listed, from enrichment programs and adult workshops, to leadership opportunities, to, um, local produce, so there was some overlap there. Uh, some of the things that seemed to be a little more challenging to be able to pull off in the absence of any funding plan was a business incubator, monthly cultural festival, studio space, and most notably, establishing a local motown, uh, where James Brown, Ray Charles, and other concurrent musicians can be celebrated, uh, and also amusing. So in, in terms of vision, it's, it's a much, I think, less focused vision, it has some interesting attributes, I didn't see any mechanisms for actually making this happen, however. And then the CCSD proposal, um, comes in at five pages of text and 862 words, um, it focuses on multi-purpose, multi-generational use of the property, the first goal is historic preservation, second goal is expansion of the early learning center with 14 classrooms, third goal, increased accessibility of community and health resources, and fourth, uh, parent resource and info center. The ideas here, the historic preservation actually focuses, I think, on moving some things out of this building, um, and allowing the expansion of the Heritage Room here at H T Edwards, uh, with some classrooms at West Broad, which line up with the historic use of the West Broad property, um, with an invitation to the community partnership for historic preservation. Um, I wasn't quite sure where the classrooms would be from the diagrams, um, I could probably find that out. Um, the, the access to the parent resource center, it's currently at H T Edwards, and it's said that the access would be better at West Broad. And then there, not listed as a goal, but other district services, many of our other student services could be located at West Broad, and so it mentioned office space for directors, disciplinary center, and so forth. I, I think the, the questions I had for this, if I remember correctly, when the board did its sticky notes and ordering of things, historic preservation is not the first goal, um, you know, it was a goal, but not the first goal. Um, and so I felt like the goals were not quite aligned with where the board had come out of that meeting. Um, I, again, I had a few questions about the use of space, um, and then the use of the, the, uh, West Broad for offices, which is a kind of a historic discussion about whether we would turn all of that property into office space. Uh, I admit to being somewhat dubious about office space, just because I feel like, uh, property, if we can use it for students and community, that I prefer that over office space personally. Um, there was no mention of the garden or, uh, young urban farmers or anything in the CCSD proposal. So just going back and summarizing, we had three proposals on the table, and I came prepared to discuss the proposals, not so much other things that had come up, and we had one 70-page proposal and two seven-page proposals. Um, I had hesitation at the May 17 meeting about simply putting those three together because they are not on the same level of the tail, uh, not on the same level of research, not on the same level of anticipation for problems such as risk analyses and, you know, what happens if something goes wrong if we don't make this much money. Uh, the Athens Land Trust proposal did have that level, I didn't see that level in the other proposals. So in summary, that, that's what I came to discuss and to ask questions about. I hope that's illuminating for people that may not have had time to go through all three proposals in some detail, uh, and hopefully that illustrates both strengths and weaknesses of each proposal. That's how I come at it as a scientist, to evaluate proposals, it's not about, uh, one's personal preferences, it's about just looking at what you got objectively and trying to go forward the best way possible for everyone. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda, this is we want to, uh, we have action items, the first action item is to approve the implementation of Abbott and ETC CSD schools. Dr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. In April of this calendar year, there was a presentation provided to the Board of Education regarding the implementation of Avid, which stands for Advancement by Individual Determination. We have a total of 18 schools in our school system who have selected and chosen to be part of that process. And instead of going over the presentation again, this is our recommendation this evening that the board approve the use of funds. And the funds are title funds, but approve the use of title funds to move forward with the implementation of Avid and the 18 new schools.
Thank you.
I'm hoping that we can afford the implementation of Avid and 18 of us.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Second motion. Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Thank you very much. Questions, comments around these agenda items?
Yeah, I have a few questions. According to what I understand, Dr. Mads, we have a large one-time expense the first year for the Summer Institute. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And there was a disadvantage listed in the packet of the, that it's costly because there's an ongoing commitment to send all teachers to the Avid Summer Institute. And so, I'm just trying to figure that out because are we going to continue to send people? Or are we going to bring it in to?
I believe in the executive summary it stated that in the first year, we are mandated to send our teachers to Summer Institute. In subsequent years, we have the ability to bring professional developers to Clark County, which will significantly bring down the cost.
But we don't have to?
We don't have to. We can continue to send teachers to Summer Institute beyond the first year. But it's mandated the first year to send teachers to Summer Institute for the first year. And I think that's the, I think that's the reason why the cost is as high as it is. I believe, and I listed that as a disadvantage, just to be transparent. On the flip side, I think it's an advantage because we have, I think it demonstrates that there's a lot of excitement in teachers who want to participate in the training and receive that training in front of them.
And how many teachers are there?
It's over 200.
Over 200?
Yes.
And just to add, you know, a part of this that I'm really excited about is, is, you know, getting our discussion of how to build a system, kind of build a system of schools that provides the opportunity to develop school, you need to be able to speak the same language. You need to have things across different schools. And I think this is a step in the right direction, getting us there.
I would like to ask one more question. Is there, I was looking through the evidence, the academic foundation piece. Is there any evidence that this is effective at elementary levels? I know it started at high school level.
Actually, the research isn't as strong right now with school-wide Avid at the elementary school level. This is a fairly new component to the Avid system. From a research standpoint, and I think I explained this during the April presentation, and will, but for those who may not be, or not privy to that presentation, we are working with Avid to research the impact of not only the elementary implementation of Avid, but also our secondary implementation. And we're actually partnering with college board to measure the metacognition growth of students over a five-year period. So, from a research standpoint, I'm really pleased that we're working in multiple ways to be part of measuring the impact of this implementation. And the fact that we have an opportunity to partner with college board is, I believe, beneficial to our students and will give us good data.
Has anybody looked at it at that level yet?
No one has, no doubt. And so the fact that post our meeting in April, I indicated to Avid that we were interested in being in that space of measuring the impact of elementary Avids worldwide. And they were excited to partner with us from their research perspective because they also acknowledge it's a space that they can run. So, we've been first, yes, sir.
Is there, is there a sense, I mean, it's exciting that we've been participating in research. Is there a sense of when we start to hear data back about how well it's going?
I would hope as soon as May of 2019. And again, but keep in mind that that college board work is going to be a five-year study. And to give it some time in terms of the study, making sure that it's.
It's a good study.
Yeah, it's a good study and it's gaining the type of run we want, I think is really incredible.
There's always a concern when our kids are getting picked, I guess, right? What would I say? I'm not necessarily opposed to innovation and being on the front lines, but what does that look like as far as additional testing or additional? What is, how would that be different than anything? How's that going to change their testing regimen? Are they going to be, are we going to use our children to provide the data and in what way?
It'll be multifaceted. It's not only providing some level of surveys to our students in terms of how they feel their classroom rigor has increased, but it's also engaging our staff in feeling how prepared they are to provide an asset-based, rigorous instructional platform. So, I think it's multifaceted. It's just not our students who are going to be surveyed and tested. It's also giving feedback from our staff. I think I shared in April, the component that I'm most excited about Avid is, it is a true investment in staff, it's a true investment in teachers and giving them high-level professional development. We talked about Summer Institute before. Summer Institute is an amazing professional development opportunity. I believe in April, we saw a video where teachers were speaking about Summer Institute. And the reason why it's mandated in the first year is because Avid, as a nonprofit organization, believes that you are not getting the true essence of the system unless you are there. And they would make the argument that, yes, you can bring in professional developers to provide that training to your staff once you're past the first year, but it's never really the same. And so I appreciate Ms. Davis's statement of, we're not bound to bring professional developers in post the first year. But to go back to your original question, I think it's going to be multifaceted. It'll be obviously engaging our students with all sorts of staff.
I apologize. This didn't occur until just next day about professional development. And I'm thinking about a partnership with UGA. Are they engaged with us on this?
I think for the first year, we wanted to, we want to get this off the ground. We want to get moving in this direction. I believe that there's a lot of synergy with UGA right now. I think I've shared with the board, but I'm working, and Mr. Harris, our executive director of secondary education, the two of us are working closely with the president's office and fanning to put together some type of student leadership program where we identify youth and really try to stretch their academic growth. Not necessarily with the idea that they're going to become UGA students, but that's a goal. It's a back, it's a goal in the back of our minds, but it's not the main objective, right? And so we know that there's opportunity to partner and use some of the Avid strategies in that program. But we also understand that with our professional development, school district, there's some, there will be leverage going into the 1920s school year for us to go to UGA and to say, "Help us research if this is making the right gains." And so, but we wanted at least establish this first, right? We want to implement and move forward and I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to partner moving forward.
Thank you.
If I could just add a little bit of research that was done actually in Madison, Wisconsin, some of the high schools there. After three years of Avid, basically it turned what we would call C-plus students into B-minus students after about three years in terms of GPA. And there were significant results at the 90% level.
Any other questions, comments?
I just want to clarify our motion, because the amount that you're asking or recommending is the 511,000 to 90,000.
Yes, ma'am.
And those funds were to be, they're available to all schools in the district. And so the three schools that are not, have not just an Avid, that would not in that amount of funds that they would be.
They still have their full allotment of title funds. They've chosen not to leverage it for Avid.
I guess that's one more question, sorry. The district director, that, if we permed that position.
That's the recommendation within our fiscal year 19.
Okay, so that'll come out in the district vote. So, that's not a part of the 511,000.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Dr. Mads, you mentioned those three schools again, because I heard all sorts of things, but I know what three schools, but I want that to come to mind, that chose not to participate in Avid.
And let me, I'll share the three names. Let me preface by saying I think the three schools are in different places and their analysis of it will continue to take time, I think. So, I don't want to present this as these are the three schools who are not aligned and these are, our schools were aligned. I don't want to present it that way. I think those schools just needed more time to digest what this was about and what it meant for their individual school community. The three schools, and in fact, with the first school that I mentioned, they were initially engaged and ready to move forward, I think, just due to leadership changes and sometimes complications with payment for travel. They chose to sit this year out as Chase Street Elementary School. But please note that they were, they were interested in continuing to explore. Barrow Elementary School is the second and the third is Clark Central.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there another question around this item? We have motion to approve the implementation of Avid. We have a second. Great discussion. All in favor? You oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up on our agenda, we have a few discussion and presentation items. The first is K-8 English Language Arts Curriculum Adoption Presentation.
Yes, thank you. You'll receive a presentation this evening regarding our English Language Arts curriculum. We are prepared as an administrative team to ask you to act on the adoption of a new English Language Arts curriculum at the June 7th meeting. One of the most prevalent questions that was posed to me during my first six weeks to six months in the school district was, what are we going to do with our English Language Arts curriculum? And they felt that, they being our teachers, they felt that we were in a very inconsistent place. In the executive summary, we lay out how inconsistent it actually has been. In our 18 elementary and middle schools, we have eight different reading programs. In our 14 elementary schools, there are eight different writing programs. In our 18 elementary and middle schools, there are six different writing assessments. In all of our different, in our 18 elementary and middle schools, there are 13 different reading assessments. So, what that means is that if you go to one elementary school, the teachers are going to assess you using a certain tool. On the other side of town, the same hard-working teachers are using a different assessment tool to determine if you are making progress or not in the area of reading, which I believe is a gatekeeper skill that all students have to have if they're going to be successful. And so there's a high level of inconsistency in the design of our English Language Arts curriculum. And it makes it difficult for us to make an educated and professional determination if students are moving in the right direction or not. And what I believe to be, and what research shows, is the most important skill that a young person needs to have leaving our schools. And so, teachers across our district came together to look at our program and to recommend what we could do better moving forward for our students. Dr. Nolan and Ms. Blan. Dr. Nolan is our executive director of elementary education. Carolyn Blan is our curriculum coordinator for English Language Arts. They've come together to provide you a presentation. I just want to front-load a few other things and then I'll pass it on to them. Number one, you will see that whatever decision that we're recommending to you this evening is based on 11 essentials that are research-based. We worked with the University of Georgia to find those 11 elements of research that grounds this work and that was the criteria, if you will, that we use to make selections. The other component that I would share with you is that we had a great level of engagement and involvement from teacher, teachers and teacher leaders in this district to give us insight and feedback on what direction we should go. And then finally, a few months ago, we had a community member come to this board and share concern about the type of materials that were being used in the area of English Language Arts instruction. What this adoption does is improvise a literacy-rich environment for every classroom, regardless of the school or the classroom that the child is in. It creates a literacy-rich classroom for every child in our school system. And so the price tag for this curriculum may be something that we should discuss. The first year of this two-year adoption, the price tag is $1,654,000. The second year is a $1.1 million cost for the adoption. There are three options. Our recommendation is that, well, let me give you the three options, then I'll give you the recommendation. There are three options. One option is that the board could give us the authority to use fund balance to pay for this adoption. The second option is for us to adjust our budgets and pay for the full amount. That means something else within fiscal year 19 would not happen and something would not happen in fiscal year 20 to make sure that this occurs. And so whatever programming we have in place, something would have to be eliminated because in our perspective, this is the most critical curriculum adoption a school system can ever make. So, that's option two. We just have to readjust. Option three is that the district look at a leasing model where we go out and we receive a lease and we are able to then leverage that and we have a 24-month period to pay off the lease. It's our recommendation that we have someone behind it. Our overall textbook adoption budget is approximately $900,000. We're prepared to invest $500,000 in fiscal year 18, this fiscal year. We're prepared to invest an additional $500,000 in fiscal year 19. And so, our recommendation was that that's the $1 million out of the $2.75 million that this full adoption would be costing the district. We are then recommending that we go out and get a lease for the remaining $1. Again, that's our recommendation, but there are many options. There are different ways that we can get there and make this happen. I would be remiss if I did not share with you that we believe that this is imperative, that we correct some of the things that I just shared with you in terms of that inconsistency around the most important topic that you can teach young people, and that is how to read. And so with that in mind, I'll pivot and give the floor to Dr. Nolan and Ms. Blan.
So good evening. Good evening to our board president, board members, Dr. Means. Yes. So we are here tonight, first I want to say thank you and Dr. Means introduce me, I'm Carolyn Nolan. I am the executive director of elementary teaching and learning here in Hart County. And this is Carolyn Blan.
And I'm the K three curriculum coordinator for.
So as we stand here tonight making the recommendations for the adoption of the curriculum materials that are described by Dr. Means, I think it's important for me to actually call your attention to the quote that's displayed there on the screen, which is from the Georgia Reading Campaign. And, and this quote is really at the heart of why we need to invest in creating systems, the ELA system, that is both equitable and accessible to all of our students. And as you can see, it talks to us in its state that by the end of third grade is a critical time for students to make the shift from learning to read, to reading, to learn. And that children who are unable to make this shift face barriers in being able to grasp the printed materials in fourth grade and beyond. And as a result, the children who cannot do proficiently by the end of third grade are more likely to experience several things, including poor health, discipline problems. They become team parents, drop out of high school. And as adults, they are more likely to spend more time in prison, struggle with unemployment, and face a shorter life expectancy. And with this being said, and this is research that's done right here in Georgia, in Georgia Reading. But this being said, I think this is, this embodies our compelling why. We're not just talking about reading and moving on from one grade to the next. We're actually talking about life and death. Because that very last piece of that paragraph tells us that they face shorter life expectancies if they are not able to read by the end of third grade. So it is extremely imperative that we embrace this statement and do something about it.
Thank you, Dr. Nolan. So she outlined and talked about a quote that really spoke to what our children need. But we also responded to many requests from teachers, administrators, and parents in our district about the need to really look at our current curriculum status and where we were. And so Dr. Means mentioned many inconsistencies that we found after we looked at observational data in the schools as well as survey data. But the other piece of data that is really important to keep in mind is that last year, roughly just a third of our students in K three were scoring proficient on integrated tests and on reading inventory. So that is a very compelling piece of data we need to keep in mind. So with that, we came to the conclusion that we needed to eliminate a fragmented, inequitable, and ineffective ELA curriculum in order to better prepare our students to be college and career-ready. And we decided to convene a task force of twenty-three members, principals, instructional coaches, and teachers, teacher leaders from our schools, and to look into these issues in a deeper way and to come together five times this past year. And we have tonight, these are the list of our task force members. We have two of them tonight who are here, and I would like them to stand and be recognized. Thank you. So with our process, we convened five times, as I said. And we use the situational analysis to identify and clarify issues around the data that we were looking at. And then we use the decision analysis to determine our current CCSD program and, and how effective it was for college and career-ready. We determined our eleven essentials, as Dr. Means said before. And this is the underpinning, the foundational piece of a comprehensive and balanced literacy program. And it really speaks to our system's thinking in terms of an entire system being at one, if you will, with our curriculum instruction and assessment. So these eleven essentials, they're in your executive summary. The research is there to support these eleven essentials, and we're just going to highlight just three of them to be really the musts, as we say when we conduct these analyses. And the first one is visible learning progressions that include teaching with all five pillars of reading, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. And we have that, we have that now in our system as we speak, but it's not consistent. And it's not equitable among the schools. And so that's part of what we are working on here with this adoption. The other essential that I wanted to highlight was number six, which is principle of effective writing instruction, which is near and dear to my heart in terms of a comprehensive writing program that all teachers and all students will be engaging with. And so we can share together that work.
I also want to call attention to essential number eight, visible progressions for student meta cognition in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. We, the task force took great emphasis, placed, placed great emphasis on this particular essential because they really wanted us to focus in on developing capable learners. And the research of John Hattie says that when you develop capable learners, that it has the single highest effect size of one point four four. And if you couple that with strong strategies, then the effect size increases. And so we also wanted to make sure that in looking at this one, getting children to really think about their thinking as related to reading, writing, listening, and speaking. Because we know that that in itself gives them a sense of agency and they're able to self-assess. And so we wanted to really focus in on how we empower students to do this. I was really impressed with the work of the task force when they had these conversations because they didn't just put the emphasis on what students would do, but they were really concerned with how teachers would change their practice to empower students to have a sense of self-agency.
So after reviewing multiple programs, the task force selected the Fontis and Penel and Lucy Hawkins units of writing, both under the company of Heidman, to support the eleven essentials in our schools. And several districts around Georgia are using these programs with success. Houston, Winnet, Cobb, and Glenn, Henry County. We are in contact with them to get guidance on how they have implemented their adoption. And so they, we've concluded, as Dr. Nolan just said, that this would not only push the rigor for our students, but it will develop our teachers with the expertise they need to, to deliver the instructional strategies. We focus on strategies over stuff. So really, this is about strategies and what our teachers are going to bring to our students. The task force will convene next year. One of the decisions we will make is for middle school reading. But we will also be, have pulse checks along the way in measuring our impact of this implementation.
I think it also bears noting that our school principals, along with the teachers and our coaches, have shared a great deal of enthusiasm about the prospect of us getting a new set of curricular resources. They are really excited. We have people all the time saying, hey, when can we get our hands on this? We're ready to dig in. And so I know that it seems at first glance that this is a hefty cost. But when you think about ensuring that all of our students have the equity, that there is equity, and that our students have access to a rigorous curriculum and curricular resources, this is a small amount to pay. I think that when we begin to think about the fragmented system that we currently have, we have to do something differently. When we look at the data, the data screams to us that something has to change. And in order to change, we must change. And so tonight, we really recommend to the board that we adopt the Fontis and Penel classrooms along with the K eight units of writing for Lucy Hawkins to be implemented to ensure that we have a comprehensive K three literacy assessment and curricular instructional system. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you quickly go back to the eleven essentials, I believe it's the first five, I believe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, number four, teaching words, solving, and vocabulary and.
And the concepts of reading, writing, and learning?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, and I'm happy to see that. I constantly read research that you have children in the state of Georgia. Now, what percentage of Clark County School District, starting these schools with a thirty-five thousand-word deficit?
Yes, sir.
And I'm happy to see that, I think. Now, the next thing I want to mention, because I heard Dr. Nolan said several times, and I hope Dr. Means mentioned it again, this is costly. But it used to be in the state of Georgia, and that law disappeared when we went through another crunch, that we spent sixty-five percent of our budget on instruction. And I believe when Mr. Hammond makes his presentation tonight, you'll see that we are spending far above that. You know, if you want to get some things done, you have to spend some money. And I'm not a firm believer in throwing money at something that would solve a problem. But programs of this nature, I really believe that it would be a help. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
My question is for Dr. Means. Moving on, last budget meeting, we had a return to our budget for the general public, six hundred and something four thousand dollars. And it brought us to a balanced budget board for like the first time in a while.
We do have a balanced budget. We're not in a deficit due to austerity cut being restored. We had an extra one point three million dollars restored to the district, of which we put staff members back in classrooms. We reduced class size. Yes ma'am? It is.
All right, I have a solution for you, Lon.
I have a question. So this, let me understand, this, this two point seven million dollars, the rest is what I'm talking about here. What is it replacing that's currently part of our system?
It's currently replacing our current ELA resources, which are buried among the schools. And so one of the ways this is different is that all schools will have the same resources. Right now, we have thirty different reading assessments, as Dr. Means said, in our eighteen schools, elementary and middle. We have eight different writing programs. We have teachers getting different professional learning over here, and teachers getting different professional learning over here. And it causes great inconsistency and inequity. And so that's what it's changing, is having this comprehensive approach.
If I may, if I may.
Sure.
I, I think this is not trying to make all of our schools the same. It is about supporting our schools in a better way. We're unable as a district office to support our eighteen elementary and middle schools if there are eight different assessments and numerous and various reading programs being used across the system. We're, we're able to, to bring in alignment, stronger professional learning for staff if we are able. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Nolan, Ms. Blan, and Mr. Hammond. If there are any other questions, please let us know. But our intent was to share with you, I think Ms. Williams actually did a great summary. We have a problem with our literacy program. We, we need to address this. And I think as Dr. Knottson and Ms. Ellis stated, it's the first area where there's a continuous area of working concentration around our social-emotional growth curriculum. And Dr. Myers is leading that work, and we're continuing to look at how we can make that stronger. And numeracy will, will continue to be a topic of discussion. So we, we understand that there's a lot of work to be done. Thank you, yes.
And let me say, ask this question, I think it makes us feel important. With this implementation, then we have consistency, we want to write with consistency, we can have veterans.
Absolutely.
And we can baseline ourselves, and we can set our own standards for performance achievement. So when we're moving toward that place, we're going to rely on state testing to tell us where we are, what our competition reading is.
So hopefully you're seeing a, a system come together now, right? So if we're, if we are now developing SMART goals that are based in assessments like MAM, NWA MAM, it's based in assessments that come out of the Fontis and Penel, Lucy Hawkins curriculum. If you approved last month the creation of standard-based assessments that teachers in the district are creating, now there, there's true measurement of growth. See, we, we didn't have an infrastructure, I think, I shared this with the board throughout the school year. We never had an infrastructure to allow us to have the type of conversations the board and the community is very interested in having about the academic growth of children. We were limited to the Georgia milestones. And so that's why we got into this very awkward, inappropriate conversation around proficiency robust. It's not about proficiency. It should be about watching where the growth of students are, hoping that eventually one of the, the main objectives is to get to proficiency on milestones. But we, we should be able to measure where students are growing throughout the school year through other assessment tools. But we didn't have that, we, our infrastructure was bare. And, and maybe at some point in the history of the district, it was more robust. It, it isn't right now. And so we appreciate you, and I know you've been approving things and you've been receiving proposals. And you've been receiving proposals from us to implement new things. You were receiving those recommendations because we didn't have anything in place. We were truly rudderless. We didn't have a true pathway. And I guess the last thing I would share with you, since you've given me the opportunity, is to say that we're unable to talk about equity and social justice in a rule-meaningful way if you don't have an infrastructure to talk about how students are growing in the first place. And so by creating the infrastructure, now we can dig deeper and have more meaningful conversations of, okay, based on the growth of students, where do we need to provide more assistance? And now, and I guess the other exciting thing about this is that now, since we have other assessments and measurements instead of just the milestones, now we can truly talk about asset-based visions of students versus deficit-based. By having no infrastructure whatsoever, we were forced to have a deficit-based conversation around, here's who, here are the kids who made it, here are the kids who didn't make it. Now we can have conversations about growth and, and what kids are growing, and how can we support those kids and teachers to make sure that the growth is happening? Thank you. The next item of our discussion, item is Hart County School District fiscal year twenty nineteen budget discussion. Board of Education.
Thank you. The Board of Education asked for another opportunity to, to receive this presentation. We provided the initial presentation in April because of our, our projected forecasting of what the budgets look like. And it came right in the heels of the legislature completing their work with the budget. And it was, it was right on the money. Mr. Hammond did an amazing job. Posted that presentation to the board in April, we've had three budget hearings. There were three community members who attended the first one at Alex Road School, two were board members. The second presentation was a one community member at the last presentation and hearing. Last week, there were a total of nine. The, those hearings were, were publicized, not only on our district website, but also in our public record paper. We, since then, I think I gave an update in April. We also received one point three million dollars in austerity cuts coming back. Then the district, we used those funds to reduce class size. And we're really pleased about being able to reduce class size in, in this area. We're, it's interesting, there's a researcher out of, now he's at Vanderbilt. He was at the University of Pittsburgh, his name is Richard Milner. And Richard Milner talks about the fact that when you have school-dependent students, and some of our students are school-dependent, right? And what that means is that you have students who may not have a.
students who may not have a literacy-rich home, they may not have, um, a family structure that can support them with their, their homework. When you have a student who is school-dependent, it's really critical to have a lower class size. Uh, and so, we, we see that connection around equity and reducing class size in that perspective. Um, the last thing I would share with you is that we made a lot of hard decisions in this budget. We reduced the operation budget by five percent to ensure that we were able to move money back into, um, support areas, reducing class size, um, and ensuring that we have the, the infrastructure and structure that we need. Um, there were a number of questions that the board asked. We, we, we answered those questions via, um, via Google Docs, and, and that's been provided and available to the board. Mr. Hamlin just wants to give you a high overview, a high overview of, of the changes that have occurred since April.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, superintendent, staff, and attendings tonight. So what we're going to do is we're going to have a oversight on the budget presentation in military for 2019, with the updates we made since April this year. So, we want to make sure the guiding principles, uh, support the budget, the strategic plan that the school system has. So, for the first time, as Dr. Meads mentioned the other day, this is the first, um, balanced budget since I've been here, 2012, probably before that, that's actually balanced with no deficit for 2019. Uh, it serves a mid-year adjustment, determining what that amount is at this time. We'll have to do some more analysis to get back to you, but that allows us more flexibility at, in the school year right before we go up to the next budget. Uh, Dr. Meads mentioned that we did cut the operation budget by five percent, also about one point six million dollars. Uh, we made sure there was some structure coaching in the school, and we're going to leverage outdated technology to close the deficit by some of the old technology that we're going to use by the school system. So, budget development process, um, so what Dr. Meads got here, his thought process was, is that the budget is a year-long process. In the past, we really can start this process in January. We started this process end of October, um, giving the guidelines of what we needed to do. We did it. Uh, so this process has been going on since October. Um, it's allowed us to stretch out the budget process, and we do more in-depth in terms of what we're looking at, and it gave the different departments and schools more time to enter what they thought they needed with the school budgets. So, what does the budget, ten of the budgets, let me include, uh, right now, we did have a projected growth of four point five nine percent, and that's been upgraded to five percent based on the latest assessment from the Evans Clark County Tax Commissioner, and that's projected revenue of about seventy-seven point nine million dollars in local tax revenues. QBE, excuse me, QBE came in with about a three point four million dollar increase. That moved in QB funds, which are state revenue of the sixty-nine point two. I will say this, though, um, that it does include austerity money, which we haven't done fully funded until this year, for the first time since 2003. Unfortunately, it did include also the, the local fair share that we have to pay in order to get type of funds, also one of about one point two million dollars. Other items included in this budget is, there is a step increase for every employee for one point five million dollars. If you're not aware of it, TRS had a huge increase this year in terms of the amount we have to pay on behalf of employees, and that's going to cost us about three million dollars. And as you can see, the TRS increase, excuse me, the TRS increase went from about sixteen point eight one percent to almost twenty point nine. Uh, we also just found out the other day that it's actually gone up to twenty-one point four three for next year. So, it's going to go even more, uh, next year's budget, 2020, I guess. Um, the total budget, as being presented today, is a hundred fifty point one million dollars, and that's about a four point five million dollar increase over actually. The military continues to be twenty mils. Uh, we're suggesting to keep it at that rate so we can generate the seventy-seven, seventy-seven point nineteen million dollars for the budget. That seventy-seven point nineteen million dollars represents about fifty-two percent of the total revenues, uh, for this year. So, what we're trying to do with this, uh, presentation here is just kind of give you an idea of how the budget has grown from seventeen to nineteen. So, if you go back all the way to 2017, you can see that the budget was about a hundred thirty-five million dollars. So, just in two fiscal years, uh, we've grown to almost a hundred fifty million dollars from that year. As you can see, the two biggest components of the budget are your top line, which is your current FLM tax, and the third, fourth line from the bottom, which is the state funds, which are called the policy, that's basic education. So, if you were to do a pie chart, break this down, and kind of give you an idea of what it would look like, is you can see the state funds are QBD is about forty-five point eight, and the FLM tax is about fifty-two point two. So, you're basically looking at, um, ninety-eight percent of all our funds come from those two revenue sources. Only about two percent comes from, uh, the other revenue taxes, some federal funds we give for indirect costs. So, what does one mil give us in terms of property tax, uh, for a Clark County School District? As you can see, back in fourteen, one mil generated about three point two. Today, it generates almost three point nine million dollars. Just as a side note, if you ever go to South Georgia, and some of the counties down there, some counties, one mil generates only like a hundred twenty, a hundred forty thousand dollars for work, we're happy to have the kind of military generation we get in this county. So, what does the FLM tax look like in 2014? So, we're around a little bit over sixty-four million dollars. Today, we're slightly over seventy-six. Austerity. So, this chart could go all the way back to 2003, but it'd be a very busy chart, and it'd be hard to look at. But if you look at, as early or as late as only 2014, the state was with only eight million dollars from our budget, our state lines. 2015, they still with him almost five point six, three point four, one point two. As early as last year, it's still one point three, and this year was the first yearly fully funded QB since 2003. If you add up all the funds that we have been collecting, it's almost sixty-six million dollars for 2003, with nine eleven for the state. Uh, the fighter tax digest, this is a report that we published in the paper. This kind of gives you an idea of what the tax digest will look like, like going all the way back to fiscal year 2014, versus the current budget. And as you can see, the tax digest had a very slight increase in 2014. Last year was one of the biggest increases we currently have, five eleven, and right now, it's four point seven eight. What we went ahead and moved our, uh, what we felt we're going to get to five percent, because a lot of times, those numbers we're looking at, uh, include, uh, skills and other stuff that they kind of take in hand, and exhibits that they've taken in hand that have to be gone through the core system to finish out before they get into additional funds, base and score cases, or they go more smoothly. So, QB funds. So, if you go back and look at the amount of revenue we generate from 2014 to 2019, you can see that QBD only makes up a little bit less than half of all the funds we get. So, you can see that there's a large difference between what the state gives us, what we have to generate locally to make up the difference for the budget. Uh, just to give you an idea of how we're funded by the state in reference to what we spend, this, uh, slide shows you that the envelope is the amount of money the state gives us for bus transportation. This is only salaries and benefits. They only fund seventy-seven bus drivers, but we spent slightly over seven million dollars for our bus drivers for what we paid. So, some other comparison between the QBD and the general fund is, we earned two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars in QB for nursing. We got our budget of about one point two three million. Uh, talked about transportation, giving a million dollars. The extra transportation budget is about eight point six nine, that includes other costs. We are nine hundred thirty-eight teaching positions. We budgeted about a hundred, one thousand eight teachers, about a hundred eighty-two parrot roads. Uh, we budgeted about a hundred seventeen special positions. So, if you take the difference between what we earn and what we are paying, there's a difference about sixty-nine teachers and a hundred eighty-two parrot roads. So, we're having to budget additional double twenty-seven million dollars out of our tax revenue paid for that that we're not going to give the state. We earned five social workers, we budgeted nine point five. We earned five psychologists, we budgeted nine, and currently have twenty-three thousand operations in the budget of thirty from QB. Also, to give you an idea of how things are done, QB has a minimum size for schools, both elementary, middle, and high, and also for a school system to be fully funded. So, as you can see, we're definitely for the thirty-three hundred for a system-wide school system. But if you look at elementary at four fifty, we've actually got several schools that fall under that four fifty FTE count, which means that we don't lose a lot of money, but we lose money like in the admin section. So, for example, at Cleveland at two seventy-three, instead of earning a full AP, we may only earn money for half AP. So, those are the kind of cuts that happen if we even have a four hundred three students in school. Those schools are all above the six twenty-four, or a high school are above nine hundred and seven. So, if we go back to all we did in 2014 and look at the revenue progression and the budgets over the last several years, we can see we started at almost a hundred and eighteen million in, uh, 2014, currently at a hundred fifty million dollars. Um, and I'll talk more to this when I compare it to the expenditure later on. So, overall expenditure budget, if we break it down by, uh, the simplest classifications, we can do it. Uh, our certified budget for salaries and benefits is about ninety-eight million, classified is twenty-seven point eight, additional athletics supplements and benefits of six eighty-five, substitute budget is five sixty-one, operating budget is a little bit over twenty-two. We have about four hundred thousand dollars from action funds for RBC programs to provide space. And that's where we get the hundred fifty million dollars for our current budget. If you go back and look at the operating budget history, just to kind of give you an idea of where some of these increases have come. If you go back to 2015 with a budget of a hundred and twenty-five million dollars, you can see back then, we didn't give any salary increases, didn't have any furloughs, we did a step increase. We did something back then called longevity supplement, which is where we gave a little bit extra money to pay for a rate maxed out, and stuff increases those teachers and employees. But we did see an increase of eight point seven percent to your rates. And then in 2016, you can see where we had no salary increases, and that TRS went up by one point two, uh, one point one two. And, uh, we had increased high school and special education positions. In 2017, a hundred thirty-eight, the state passed a three percent salary increase, which we passed almost every employee. We had step, there was no TRS, but classified health care increase didn't go up, which means that we don't get any funds for classified employees, uh, to pay for the health care increase. So, that all added up on the local budget funds. Um, and we standardized the rates for bus drivers. Uh, 2018, the budget was a hundred forty-six million dollars. Again, the state passed a two percent increase. As you can see, there was a big increase in TRS that year of two point five four, and again, classified health care went up again. And what I mean that went up, it went up by a hundred thirty dollars per month, per person, which we're talking a lot of money. Um, 2019, the current budget is a hundred fifty million. There's no salary increase, there is a step, but TRS went up by four million dollars, excuse me, four percent, which is almost a three point five million dollar increase to hit to the budget, which we only got a portion left from the state. Uh, so, the story we're trying to tell here is, is if it hadn't been for a lot of these, a lot of these unfunded mandates coming from the state, the budget would be smaller today, and we'd have more money to spend in the classrooms. So, let's look at the expenditures from 2017 to 2019. As you can see, the budget in 2017 was about a hundred thirty-nine point five million dollars, and today, we're looking at a hundred fifty point one. And you can see the progression in the different categories, like instruction, it's gone from almost ninety point nine to a hundred point six million. So, you know, slightly less than, uh, right around nine million, slightly less than nine million dollars. You can see that we're putting a lot of the money that we do generate back into the area of instruction. So, how does that look in a pie chart? So, let's look at that. So, if you were to take all the areas that support instruction, and that's in instruction, pupil services, instructional services, media, other support, and other outlay, that's almost a hundred eleven point, uh, five million dollars. And if you look on the pie chart, we're paying about seventy-four percent of our budget at the school level, instructional level, and support level, for all our students. Maintenance operation is about ten percent at fifteen point two. Transportation is about six percent at eight point eight. School admin is about nine million dollars, and that comes up to about six percent. And last but not least, behind the scenes people like HR and business services and some other areas, that's only four percent of the budget, or about five point four, with a hundred fifty million dollars. So, let's look at the expenditures. So, going back to 2014, our budget was about a hundred twenty point three million dollars, and today, you can see it's grown to a hundred fifty point one. And there again, a lot of that increase has either been salary increases, classified health increases, or TRS increases. So, if we compare the revenue to the expenditures, you can see how we were deficit budgeting all the way back to 2014, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and this year will be the first year we've ever balanced our budget. So, one of the things people ask us is how we get, what are our federal funds and how are they spent? So, because the way the federal funds overlap the state differently, in other words, we're, right now, we're currently in the eighteen, um, federal fund budget period, but it doesn't end until the end of September, and it starts over again October. So, because of that lap, we had to go all the way back to seventeen to pull actual data, uh, because eighteen is not done yet for federal year. So, if we went and pulled seventeen data, you can see that a couple, that we spent almost twenty-two point six million dollars in federal funds, and these are all reimbursement, uh, funds, which means whatever we spent, we got reimbursed by these different funds where they meant we spent. And one of the big things I'll notice is Title I is almost six million dollars. And then your next big cluster was drag readers at three five, sped at two point eight, and then early head start, head start at three point three, and then down here, right from the start, pre-K lottery at three point three, is the OEL money that we spend for kindergarten kids. So, that all goes together, excuse me, pre-K kids, that all goes together, and that's almost seven million dollars. And then there's some smaller funds throughout here that you can read for yourself and see what they are. Now, what does that mean for us? Well, that means for, uh, CCSD, we get about twenty percent of other funds outside of general fund through state grants, and we get about seventy-three percent of, I'm sorry, we have about twenty-seven percent of the money we get from the state, federal government, goes towards employees of seventy-four positions. Apologize to the next slide, what I wasn't going to talk about. And then seventy-three percent of the federal funds reside, provide us about a hundred ninety-eight positions that are federal or state-funded. So, if we didn't have this money, we wouldn't have those positions. Of the expenditures, uh, we have four point five, four point one million dollars coming from the state, which represents about eighteen percent of all the funds we get outside of general fund, and then federal funds are about eighty-two or eighteen point five three. So, what does that mean? So, if we take the federal funds, state funds, and general fund, and we add them together, in reality, what you're really looking at is a budget of almost a hundred seventy-three million dollars. Now, granted, we're using seventeen numbers, so the state and federal, the state and federal numbers might be a little different at, once we close out eighteen, but in general, the numbers stay pretty close to those amounts we spend from year to year. So, what that means is, if you take the hundred seventy-two, you can see we make about eighty-seven percent of our funds are out of general fund, eleven are federal, two percent are state. This does not take into consideration capital loss funds for capital projects, or any debt service we pay for debt services to manage any of the debt service that we issue and have capital projects. That's a whole separate item. That is projected at, John, a hundred ten million for volunteers? Yeah, a hundred ten million dollars for the loss five, over five years. So, where does that put us from balance-wise? So, if you go back to 2014, you can see we were at, just at twenty-five million dollars, and we slowly slightly raised on fifteen. Um, you can see the big jump from fifteen to sixteen, that's when we sold metro bridge revenue. And then we actually decreased in seventeen, because we actually had a deficit come in, uh, that was projected, and it did come in slightly less, it came in less than what we thought, but it did come as a deficit. And then we slightly increased again in eighteen based on the current projection of the cash flow analysis where we might end up. We're about six hundred thousand dollars in the good surplus versus where we were without the deficit. And then if the budget holds steady, there's a possibility it stays right at eighteen numbers, or maybe slightly increases to nineteen. It depends on exactly how the budget for nineteen holds out. So, let's talk about where we are now, based on what we've just seen. So, both revenue and expenditures are projected a hundred fifty point one million dollars, which is a balanced budget. Uh, that reflects a five percent decrease in each department operating budget we get there, and also that shows an increase in contributions that we're going to have to pay on behalf of employers from sixteen point one to twenty point nine for TRS. That number there does not include what the teachers have to pay on their salary, which is six percent, which means in essence, we're paying twenty-six point nine percent of every single person covered by TRS each month to the state based on their salary. Step increases are in, uh, in the budget for certified, classified, and austerity cuts of the one point three were fully funded for, um, this current year budget. This here is the budget that we published in the paper. The number sixty-one of general fund is what we, uh, reported back in April. As you can see, the special revenue funds are what we're projecting, uh, for all of the state and federal funds we talked about. Currently, for capital projects, we're projecting about forty-seven million dollars in expenditures for the upcoming year, which is going to help also serve thirteen million dollars in debt service to pay for geo bonds involved with that. And enterprise fund, the nine million dollars, that is your school activity fund, excuse me, that is your school nutrition account, which has to be reported separately from all the other funds. So, we spent about nine point seven million dollars to feed all our children all year long. So, where we have to get here today? So, we had meetings, uh, May eighth, fifteenth to twenty-third, based on the April fifth presentation of the budget. the April 5th presentation of the budget. The final budget will be approved June 7th along with the military. And then, board members, is the budget for 2019.
Thank you for that presentation and all the work, the many, many months it's been going through. We have an opportunity to ask, I think, follow-up questions for the board around budget.
We have the $1.3 million that was put into the budget and we've been playing around with the positions, so there's small adjustments going on with the budget between different locations, with students moving to new locations or staffing moving to new locations, but that's basically what we're doing at this point.
And then I hear you, right, so the mid-year adjustment that we've seen in previous budgets is not part of what you presented?
Correct. Dr. Means wants to reserve that money in case there's something that comes up we need to use it for.
Right. Any other questions?
It's not actually part of this budget, but it kind of starts to intersect it with regard to the title funds. Dr. Means, you said that principals really have ideas for what, and that's Title I? Yes, or no? Because that's about at least $6 million, right?
Correct.
That's from a couple of years ago?
Seventeen this year.
Okay.
But we had this pass October.
Okay. Because we have been talking about flexibility with Title I funds, but those are spoken for essentially, except for what we talked about with ADD.
Well, that was a part of the earmark, right? And so principals, once they made the decision to go with ADD, they earmarked some of their funds for ADD. Principals have met on a preliminary basis with either Dr. Nolan or Mr. Harris and Aaron Buckley, who is the person in charge of our title funds, to determine what their preliminary plan would be for fiscal year 19 with title funds.
Thank you. Any other questions, members around the budget? Very informative, thank you so much. Anything else to talk to me from you? The end of our agenda here today.
No, sir.
Okay. Fantastic. We have a motion to adjourn. Ms. Davis, second to my Dr. Knotts, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, folks. Thanks for coming.